Hello, Jimmy! My name is Minyam.
Okay guys, stand up hello everybody bring your belly bumpers.
My name is Abby.
In a line, in a line.
Not, not possible.
On the line over here.
Not at all.
Out of here, Alio, Alio.
Uh, um, this young man needs help with his helmet, Mr. Fink.
Oh, Alio, here, give me that helmet. Ran by in the yellow and orange outfit, Jimmy, can I have that helmet?
Guys!
What are we gonna do? When?
Everyone hit their hands up and then wave it.
Good, good!
Hey, hey!
Good! The kid's back.
Ben?
One, two, three. Everybody line your bumpers up and step up. Yeah, yeah, you got the bumpers. Line your bumpers. Line them right bumpers.
If everyone could please get into their bumpers, if everyone could get into their bumpers please. Start your engines. We're rabbi. The idea of course is to make a goal into the other team's goal. When I drop to three, everyone will run for the ball in the middle. Please do not trample anyone. Please do not stand meet anyone.
Jimmy.
Consider it a tie. And make sure you can get to the most goals.
Jimmy, are you gonna have camera the game?
Hello, what's your name?
On your mark!
Yeah, you.
On it, on it, on it.
And where are you from? And are you having fun here at Camp Caver? And what's your favorite part of camp?
You've got plenty of time.
Sports, you like sports? You like sports? You like belly bumping?
On your mark! Wait, Ruvie puts down the ball at the count of three. Please be careful. Don't kill Ruvie. On your mark! Catch it and go!
Hold the handle.
Hold the handle, guys!
Hold the handle! Oh, we got one, nigga. Back to the door.
There you go, off the bounce down there, it's going to the goal, Yakko. Yakko, don't move, Yakko. So by the way. And the ball's going around, and where is that ball anyway? And there's four and a half minutes left in the round, four and a half minutes left in the round. Don't kick anyone. There's the ball, oh, it's over there, oh, no, no, it's under. Don't sit on the ball.
Get up.
Get up, get up, get up.
Stand up. Ben, get up, Jimmy, get up. Jimmy, get up.
Catch the ball!
Jimmy, hold on to the handle. Stand up.
Guys, you gotta hold the handles.
Okay? I need a play-by-play, Donnie.
I'm still up!
I don't know the names, but I do their names.
Jack takes the ball, get up, he's got the ball, huh? Kick it, oh, right into a collision course. All we got. Oh, he gets it there, taking the ball, check it. Oh, shot down to the right way Charlie. Oh, it's vicious, they're getting in the hole, and the fight, oh, they're rubbing it around, oh, it's a ball, oh, we got a little bit of contact there. They missed the ball again, oh, there we go. Inter goes down with the guy, oh, and they go, oh, and they kick it, it looks like a pass, right? Oh, it comes down, oh, and who was that just went down? Who just went down? Inter just went down again, Inter cannot stand on his feet.
Oh baby!
Goal!
Goal, Bobby! Dave and Hank. The ladies today! Congratulations to all those who made it possible. Now it may take a big second to start out in this. Okay, everybody, Jack gets in this game. We'll have the seats. One, two, three, go! And they go, they go, basic, oh, they're getting, oh, it's missing, that is second. Very vicious, very vicious. Oh, ball goes down, boy, take this, oh, this makes Terry, oh, Alex falls, all the ball. David tried to be a good protection, good protection. Take that ball, take it out of there, oh, it's been up, oh, it's in the air, it's a goal, it's a good goal, yes! Oh, it's up, it's up. Go! Dave and Hank. Give him. Give him the hand, it doesn't look good. Somehow, they must realize, come back in this game.
Let's go! Dave and Hank, back to your side, come on.
Okay, looks like, uh, Dave and Hank get psyched up.
I don't wanna go in there.
Too late.
Catch, catch, catch it.
No.
Move it, move it. Move it, I wanna see.
Stop, Slomo, stop.
Hey!
Oh, wow, the worst of Hank. And Ben, once again, goes back there and kicks it.
Did this work?
Oh, but this time, nothing in clash. Oh, 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 it's open, oh, where was Shurik, makes a sneak play. Oh, it's amazing, Alex is down, it's bodies everywhere. Oh my gosh! Ball is down. Oh, it looks like Basak's trying to chase the ball, he's going down for it, but it looks like they're keeping the right helmet, it's doing that to himself. It's over, Ruvie makes another sneak play, great, they got it going. It's over, got it for the ball, back to the back. Go to Ben. Oh, it looks like somebody didn't know what's going on. Welcome to reality, folks. Two minutes remaining. Two minutes remaining, and they're getting vicious, oh, oh, it's fast, like, it looks like, oh, Basak, oh! Yes, Basak's the ball, oh, yeah, oh, you got this.
Get this. It's coming, I'm gonna walk towards that.
Oh, Charlie tries to kick, Inter goes back, LeVie tries to kick the ball, oh, people try to stand up, not successfully. Down goes. Inter. Oh, ball's fake, fast break, oh, LeVie kicks it back, oh, Charlie is against one kick. Is it going to be? It's a kick, is it gonna go through? Oh, it got through, oh! By David Charlie.
Come on, Slomo. Got it.
Yes, he kicks the ball, too, Charlie, Charlie has a good kick, can he actually kick it this time? Yeah, he does! Oh, and now.
He could, go, oh, no, way!
Not yet, wait a second. Oh, the kick by Ruvie, oh, it's a fast break, it's a fast break, you got it, oh, he missed the ball, where is the ball? Where is the ball? Basak hits the ball.
Forty-five seconds left in the round.
Forty-five seconds left, oh, the ball's right back in, it's in center ring. Oh, David, David Washington is on the ground and cannot get up. This is not a good situation for Donovan, he's not gonna speak, folks, he's gonna play, he's gonna play with determination. Oh, we are all about flying. Go, oh, oh, head down, down. Right, come on. Ball's going down the court, we have thirty seconds left in the game. Oh, oh, who's that? LeVie, no, go, 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 kick it, oh, oh, Charlie shakes it, oh, the ball goes back, good ball, pass, now. It's over, go, go. Twenty seconds left, twenty seconds. Oh, something, oh, it's over here. Twenty seconds left. They're trying this ball, trying to, oh, oh my gosh, give me the, they're threatening, they're threatening. Ten seconds. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Let's go.
Go, Ben!
Alright, turn this off.
Dave and Hank, back to your side.
Take your finger. How are you doing down there?
I can't. With one. Then it's over. One, go.
Mac, help her, Mac, where are you, Mac? Back? You look like you had it.
Get it.
Did you have it? You had it.
What's on the other side?
Oh no.
You can wait, you can watch the other two games right now.
First goal scored.
Isaac, what did they do in the first game? I think we had to start moving the pedal.
I just think a license for this, I think.
Oh, winning, bros, winning. No, I'm surprised, you're the person who scored the only game for Dave and Hank. Charlie, no, David Charlton, David Charlton, did you have fun?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you David, that was a great challenge.
Thank you, come back and visit another time, you're all beautiful, you're the stars.
Dave and Hank, please line up at your respective end zones, and give them knowledge. Get on to end zones!
You had a good time?
We're gonna whip button second round!
It said it gets so hot in there.
We're gonna win that, too hot, we're gonna win!
Winning!
We're gonna win!
Let's go back now!
That's your motto, you're gonna lose. Hey, your motto is?
We are the winners!
I want to go with this.
We didn't get, you gonna tell them?
Their motto is, they're gonna try.
Yo, put on me. The Nickelodeon symbol. Hey!
Nice knowing you!
Nice knowing you too! Your man.
Oh, oh, well, you're going.
Someone know who's on our team!
Do not shed any of the other clothes off, come on!
Why is the goalie playing, D? How long?
Two.
I was in Dallas, see, that's how you can tell.
And the trick is why? Oh, stop, this is the ball completely runs into one of the, we have an entry on the field, please stop play, please stop!
I'm gonna go on the record saying, I hate.
This is NBC, this is not NBC.
With names, Jimmy, that's.
Alrighty, alrighty, alright. Here we go.
I know. It worked out that way. Let's tell them they have the ball, kick it in two. Nigga, nigga. Oh, wait, stop, 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 stop! You have to hold it off the field. You'd suck, Vitoits, belly bummer, Vitoits, belly bummer has fallen, I'm with you. So let me tell that. Are we ready to start?
Jimmy, does it have teleport on?
Are we ready to start? We need someone to get in the belly bumper, please.
Yeah.
I'll go.
He was in last time.
I'll go.
Belly bumper, the place you think, part of the man. Abishai goes down, oh, over and under, Abishai, the bodies all over the place. Oh, Stark kicks the ball, and Natali is taking the other end of the chip that he has. Oh, Stark kicks it, I'm sorry, Stark kicks it again, oh, oh, Natali Thomas got it. Oh, Natali crashes into someone, and that someone is down, but it's someone's on his feet. Stark kicks the timer, Stark belly bumps the timer, oh, it's crazy, Natali has the ball. Oh, the ball is kicked away from Natali, yay! Zev, I have the camera on my face, Zev, please, don't leave me, please, the kids, oh, no, I knocked two. Who's that? Who's that?
Hello, Isaac.
Lucky!
Zev, three minutes left.
There's three minutes remaining, three minutes remaining in this game.
Ask Jimmy.
Oh, 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 oh.
The ball is in Natali's hand, the ball is on the ground, no one knows where it is, now, Jimmy's trying to kick it, oh, now who is the ball? Oh, there it is. JP has the ball, JP, if he ever throw, JP walks, JP kicks, JP, Abishai tries to touch it, but he doesn't want to, even though no one cares if he touches it or not. The ball, and Mr. Stark goes to the ball, Mr. Stark kicks the ball, Natali's trying very hard to keep up with Mr. Stark, but he cannot, Natali has the ball, Mr. kicks the ball, kicks the kid, oh my god, Natali's just kicked the kid. The ball, oh, we just cracked.
Oh, Domino!
What is that, who's that? It's, no, it's a little bit, I don't know, the ball was on the ground, the minute it's been held, it may remain, the minutes can't seem to get off the ground, oh, who's that? Who's that? The ball, where is the ball? Everybody wants to know, where is the ball? The ball's in the air, the ball's landing, the ball's in the air, the ball's land, oh, the ball's in it, and the game has begun again. How much time? Everyone wants to know, two minutes remaining in this ballgame. Oh my gosh, someone's on the ground, there's someone on the ground, someone cannot get up, who is that? Who is that? Who are you? Tell us, who are you? What planet are you on? On your right. On your right, get off the ground, you are here again. Oh, somebody's above the free, oh, get stopped by, someone. Who is that? Eton, Eton! Jimmy, I like your nice center helmet, man. Oh, they kicked the ball, still good, ball's still inside, oh, the ball is. Oh my god, Interma Shabuk is on the ground.
I reiterate.
And he, oh my god, oh, it's getting this, don't care where the ball is anymore, there's the ball, happens to be by, it's named, it's. Stark is taking the D, oh my gosh, oh, now who is that? Who's got the ball? The Vitoits, what the heck is going on over there in the yellow? Oh, stop, 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 stop. Keep going, okay, keep going, oh, Natali versus Abishai, Natali grabs Abishai, Natali, Abishai is phased and confused as to exactly where he is at this moment. Abishai is trying to pull himself together, but can't quite cut it, oh my gosh, oh, Eton kicks it out, yay, Eton! Oh, and Natali thinks the other end is of his size, and he's saying, yes, everybody, the ball gets passed anyway, now who's this? Who's that? Oh, Shushur makes the ball, meanwhile, on the other side, we have a large fight brewing between Slomo, Slomo has the ball, and it gets to Vitoits, and Vitoits, but they're trying, oh, blow smoke. One minute, basically, minute took is left, and poor Slomo is getting hammered in like a sail. And we are, oh my gosh!
Arm it up, arm it up, come on.
Something's going to happen there, you saw? Oh, my gosh, we have an open shot, open shot, and it's good! It's a goal, so give them a ball in.
Forty-five seconds left.
For the Gladiators, please return to your base for a final battle.
Back to your sides, everybody.
When it starts, please return to the bases. All right, Stark, get back there.
Yeah, one, five, four.
All right, guys, please line up, ready for the charge, attack will begin in five, four, three. Oh, we haven't stopped in the countdown.
Where's Jimmy? Where's the camera? Jimmy?
On the left side, I'm sorry, can I go on the left? On my right. On your right, I'm sorry.
Here we are. Here we sit like birds in the wilderness, birds in the wilderness.
Ron and Essing is in the back, controlling himself on a different.
We're trying to.
But back to the game.
I am not putting on a belly bumper this year. I don't need any more pictures of me at a belly bumper.
Uh, three, what, they said fifteen. Two seconds. Thirty seconds left. Okay, uh.
Someone wants to play this. No, no, yeah, I'm around, I have a. Is that a camcorder? Oh, you want? Zach, is that a camcorder?
Yep.
I also have one.
Let me tell you something, the game is tied.
In this last round, get out of those belly bumpers, and the next round is going in, the new belly bumpers are getting into the belly bumpers. And here we go, quickly, quickly, we wanna get two more rounds in, let's hurry up now, everyone.
It's ripped. He's dead. He is dead.
Zev, God, Zev.
Isaac, you just flipped the whole side of that one.
Eddie's sticking out, God.
Anybody's game now, anybody's game.
Zev, look at the hole. Zev, look at the hole. Zev, look at this hole.
Just so you should know, this is the kind of belly bumper soccer that can, um, that divides the men from the boys, so, probably have to play hard on all the viewers out there, you know?
Way to go, Isaac!
Thank you, JP, that was, um, that was, uh, really good. Thanks, that was very profound. I'd like to make a hundred apologies.
Thank you, guys, I've looked over a couple times.
Right it up. Uh, Ruvie and Doc, yeah, please stop.
I'll be out for a day.
And now for the other opening, I want, they go.
It's getting ready, they're gearing up, folks, this could be the one, they need to win, they've got to win, they've worked hard, the other team did what they had to do. Now, can these warriors and champions come together in one?
Number one.
To win the game.
We'll find out today.
Today.
Zach, we'll get fight.
Your.
No, 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 please, please, no, 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 no!
We're the best, folks, there are only six.
Don't do this to me, please, please, don't do this to me, please, please, no, please, no. I swear.
We're gonna win! People, it's the way! We roll, we roll, we're gonna beat them, we are the best team in the world, and you can't beat us in a fight, we're awesome, we're awesome! No, we got him! We got him!
Okay, Camp Chamber, three minutes round. For your play-by-play, stop to hide and call for Camp Caver Belly Bumper.
Smile. Gotta smile.
Hey, I gotta.
To give a few inspiring words to our players in this last three-minute round of play. Rabbi Schwartz, who knew that, that the sport of belly bumper has grown in the past three years since it first started back in nineteen ninety-four, I believe it was? Yes, and, uh, we wanted to, do you feel that the game is, has improved any, has the skills have grown amongst some of the campers and the teams?
Well, you know, you know, that back in nineteen forty, nineteen ninety-four, you know, that, uh, you know, that, uh, you know, that, you know, it was very nice, we had a good summer, but you know, we needed something, you know? Make the summer, you know, a little more expect.
Excuse me, Rabbi Schwartz, I don't know, would you please explain?
Well, you know, that, uh, belly bumpers, you know, are the, uh, tradition, you know, of the camp, you know, and, uh, everyone should enjoy it, and you know, and have a nice day, you know?
Wow, I need to cool off of that, um, wow, I've never known that you could say nothing, it's so much I'm talking about. Thank you, Rabbi Schwartz. Rabbi Schwartz, yes!
Is it a goal? It's a goal, folks, and within literally seconds, Dave and Hank have shown why they are the champions of this belly bumper season.
Let the staff get to play!
The staff are not allowed because the kids want some real competition, okay?
Isaac, let's go, back to your side, come on back.
No, no, Slomo, please get up. Slomo. Slomo, say yes or no. Good job, Slomo, and Slomo, would you mind saying no now?
Yes.
Oh, you wouldn't mind, oh, okay. There you go, Robert kicks right into the face of someone, I can't say, I, do you want to say it again, please? Oh, we had a fight, they don't feel, oh, no, oh, Robert's going on the charge, and the ball is in Dave and Hank's court. JP, what do you feel about the game so far?
I think that we're trying to keep it a clean game, and I don't think.
That's right.
You know, that's the one thing that we try to do, and.
Oh my god, while you were talking, JP, David has been able to possess the ball, and he's going to try to aim for it, but, oh, it's stolen from him, and it's, by Interma, it's unblocked by Sammy! Sammy, can Sammy get it out of there, time? Yes, he can.
That was some great defense.
Yes, it was, they're trying to go in again, oh, and the, oh, amazing blocking the offense team, the ball is outside, kicked by, are you? Who's not playing?
He may go all the way!
Oh, they're kicking, oh, he may go, he may go, oh, the block by LeVie, oh, who's that?
Run man, man man, thunder, all the way down to the goal.
Oh, my gosh, and who's that? Who's got the ball? Who's got the ball again? Who has the ball? Someone please tell me who's got the ball.
It's the ball!
Oh, boy, go, go.
Get away!
Oh, go, go, away, check it, oh, you missed it, man. And now, Abishai, Abishai is looking something at that ball, who?
Right there.
There it is, oh, fuck!
Hang on.
Get him, boy, get off the ground! Oh, back to Max, and that's a ball, Max kicks it out, Max picking someone, Max cannot control the ball. Interma scores and I'm blocked, it's fine, it's a little animal on the field, I cannot believe it, Ruvie kicks it out, Ruvie, what the heck are you doing? Don't play! Kick it out, kick it out, kick it out, good block, an amazing play by David. Oh, it's out of bounds, but guess what? It's out of bounds again, David, get back, get it! Sammy, stop it, Sammy, get it out of there, Sammy! What's happening, I cannot see, oh, oh, oh! Hit him, boy, blocked by his own player. That's not a goal, that's not a goal, Sammy is on the ground, Ruvie is trying to pick up the bodies, it's amazing. One minute, one minute, meanwhile, over in the other court, LeVie looks a great fisty throw, over to your left guard, who gives it off, he's, oh, he's, he's, oh, who's running, Rabbi Schwartz? There we go, and the score, can he score? It's on the right side, oh! Twenty-five seconds left in play. And then, again, she'll put some lines, oh, on back in the belly bumper game, we have both sides, so thank you, respect the side, thank you. Oh, can we play the game, bros, can we play? Oh, Lycia, a, a, a patient on the right side, oh my gosh, was Inter trying to somehow manage to spy on the other team at those costs? Usually, a bunch of all the people, oh, the air, let's go! Oh, oh, that was, oh, oh, I'm sorry, get him out, it's fine, oh, oh, is it to the? Oh, oh, it's trying to, oh, blocked by Natali, the important Israeli soccer player, oh my gosh, he's amazing, he kills Sammy, oh, knocks it out, but there's a lane block, boy, oh, stop. Ball's out, Sammy gets it out, ten seconds, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, two, two, one, eh! Get him out, trying very, very, very. Good job, boys, they cannot, just stop, please, get off the field, good, not playing, sorry, stop, stop, we're not playing, stop, please stop playing. All right, now it's time for the staff, the staff, the staff, please, get off the field, get off the field. The score is one-one. Three up, three up, sorry, three up. Okay, are we ready? Match up, come on.
Don't stick it through. We just get hot.
Score, go!
Hey, what's the angle? What's the angle?
Wait, there he is.
Hey!
Did you catch this ball?
Let's go! No flimmer! Well, it's brilliant!
Then I'm gonna teach that my step up. I'm starving, Shoray. I'm starving, Shoray.
Go! Got it, Miller! Let's go, let's go! Let's roll, guys! Go!
We're winning fourteen to two.
Yay!
Winning coach.
Yo, come on up!
Yo! I am enjoying myself here immensely, and only in Camp Caver do you enjoy yourself so immensely. We are having a great time over here, and as you can see, we are winning fourteen to two again, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Keep it out of play!
Yo, boy!
Hey, y'all, do a catch and no foul! Get on it! Use your head, not your body. That was a very smart move, what do you think? Hey, hey!
What? Oh, oh, okay.
You wanna get sandwiched here, the only way you can easy your shot on the table.
Look at that intense concentration. Ooh. Very impressive.
I'm gonna ruin this.
Hold on, hold on. Pardon me. Whip me. Oh, not hard enough. He only... Look at that intense concentration.
Keep up, keep up, don't go to sleep, don't be on the mound. And, twice, hit a pitcher! And it turns five for a big time for the ump. And the runner will advance to third. On a ground that's good, good sacrifice, five, the better.
Everybody go show me? Go to the side, go to the side! Anything's free.
You're wrong, you're wrong. Only, only, I'll take two mistakes, I'm on my path. Do nothing, guys.
Come on, we need to come off of it.
Hey, three seconds, let's go!
Come on, baby! He's in there, he's up! No, he's dead.
Do I actually, you arguing with him?
No, yeah.
Don't argue, sit, sit.
Why are you arguing? Oh, get on his face!
So it is.
What? So I go...
Shimi!
Sit there, oh.
Shimi! Shimi! Off the wall!
I know, you...
That's smart! She's so ugly!
No, keep over the net! Keep over the net!
What you?
Keep over the net! His head, not over the net! Not when the guy's trying to hit it.
Okay, let's see!
Play the game, let's go!
And Morty's position hasn't changed at all.
Having fun yet? Yes, we are having fun yet. Here is gorgeous, lipstick, Maryland, a wonderful night.
So he's just pretending.
Monkey face! Monkey face!
I think you're faking.
Nah.
I've been calling him since eight years ago, okay, so we know. I know.
What is the number three?
You left.
Take me after the ball game.
Huh?